This. Meeting to order, this is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, September 29th, 2020. Just reminding everyone to please fill out your census. Don't delay, do it today. So my2020census.gov. All right, our first item is the Hamilton County Continuity of Government Plan. Jeff Aludo is going to kick this off briefly, and then we're going to hear from Nick Crossley and Morgan Peterson, both with the EMA.
So, thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse. Just clip notes summary here. So the Ohio Revised Code is very specific about how counties must go about proceeding with continuity of government in the event of a disruption on the Board of Commissioners or in the governance structure of the county. So earlier on this year, I had asked Nick, Nick Crossley with EMA, if he and his organization would help us distill the requirements and the procedures in the Ohio Revised Code down into a streamlined policy that the Board could have, the Boarded Administration could have, to guide how we proceed through various emergency situations in the event that emergency resulted in the disruption, a disruption in the governance structure of the county. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick and Morgan to walk us through the continuity of government, government plan that they put together, assuming that the Board approves. We would bring this board as a by leave item on Thursday for, for vote by the Board. So with that, Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Commissioners and guests. So we embarked on this, talking to Jeff about a year and a half ago, a year ago. COVID obviously threw a bit of a wrinkle into it. I have Morgan on here to answer any technical questions, and to be quite honest, she did the bulk of the work, if not 95% of it. So I really appreciate all of her hard work. And so the key to a continuity of government plan is, and several of you have heard me say this, is that even if we have a disaster in Hamilton County, the business of government never ends. And one piece to help us, two pieces, two key pieces that we've been working off along to is continuity of operations. So we've been working on the business continuity plan for all the various county departments and agencies. And then, of course, continuity of government. And so Morgan spent an extensive amount of time researching the ORC. So everything as far as how one of the, one of the elected offices, and there are eight, right, Morgan, that this plan covers, if you've had a chance to read it, I think that Jeff sent it to you, then everything that talks about how those are replaced is in the ORC. So nothing in this plan, it's all ORC driven. What we have done is taken the ORC and putting into a procedure for how we will do it, implement the law in Hamilton County. And you sure saw this, and I use, unfortunately, when Commissioner Portman resigned, sorry about that, that's she, letting me know something, or if you can hear. The, we basically followed this procedure then, but that, that allowed for a process that was not urgent, if you will. And so I'm going to start a small presentation here, and I'll show you real quick what offices it covers, in case you haven't seen this. Let me pull this up real quick. So you can see this, the Board of Commissioners, the three of you, the prosecuting attorney, the auditor, the treasurer, the clerk of courts, the sheriff, the recorder, the county engineer, and the coroner. So those are the elected offices that this covers. And so let me share, now I have to get out of this, and I'll start the presentation and walk you through sort of what the plan covers in short order. So basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to ensure the preservation, maintenance, and reconstitution of government, so these key elected offices. In Hamilton County, the focus is obviously outlining how the Board of County Commissioners, and as an extension of the County Administrator, will continue during a disruption, but it also covers the other elected officials as well. When is continuity of government used? Basically, when you're unavailable, incapacitated during an emergency that requires action. When a vacancy, a position of a key government official, for whatever reason. If you happen and need to relocate, and we're very fortunate being county level, is that basically, we can go anywhere in the county and still be within our jurisdiction to be able to conduct business, which is sort of what you were doing when you were taking our meetings around the county once a month, I believe. That was a great opportunity to partner with local communities and see what kind of facilities are available, if we have to hold our, our meetings somewhere besides downtown. And then, if there's a substantive threat that has the potential for continuity of government and operations, and that could be, you know, mainly around a terroristic threat, but there could be other threats as well. So that's sort of what we're doing on here. And also, I like to say that while we could get through this by a quick review of the ORC, and everybody remembering how things work, wouldn't it be better if we planned, trained, and exercised? And so eventually, we'll probably walk through a little tabletop of this, so again, we can take the procedure we've written and put it into play. So basically, all of, the, the procedure is written about basically how you do business now, which is the Board sets the policy and guides policy, both development and implementation, and then the Administrator carries that out for you, or with you. And so the County Administrator, in consultation with the B OCC, will determine when active action is needed, so you want together to come to that decision. The County Administration and/or the clerk of the Board will then send the notifications, that's outlined in the procedure that we've documented. It's a nice, clean, one-page document that really just keeps it simple and to the point. And then, it outlines the lines of succession. And so I think that, again, we in our heads know that the, the B OCC president is unavailable, the vice president takes over, but we want to document that process. And then, the Hamilton County Administrator has identified the line of succession for the Hamilton County Administrator. And so these positions are kept generic, so we don't have anybody's, there's a couple of names in the, in the draft that we sent you, but we're going to take those out so that it's position rather than person, that saves us having to keep re, if, if we had to take somebody's name out, we'd have to re-promulgate the plan again, and we don't want to keep doing that. So that'll be changed, just a slight change. And if you have any questions, again, everything that we're doing in here is from a legal perspective, is straight out of the ORC, and we've got that documented of what that goes back to. It's also been reviewed by the prosecutor to make sure that we, and we worked closely with Michael Friedman, with the interpretation of what we were reading, what Morgan was reading in the ORC. So what are we talking about, from a vacancy? So any kind of sickness or long-term illness with a doctor's note for two county commissioners at the same time? Again, probably would never happen, but you know, it's 2020. So, not that I would mind anybody. But the appointment by the County Central Committee of the political party was the last occupied, so we've done that earlier this year. And then the B OCC appoints the acting officer. So again, all of that's a process that we're all familiar with. The delegation of authorities, so those are outlined in lines of succession. So again, nice, clear, concise. And then the B OCC, by resolution, may delegate any of all of your functions conferred and incumbent upon the Board to the Administrator during emergency, which, which have done and, and do occasionally over time. And then, of course, if we need alternate facilities, working with you will identify what that alternate facility is and move our operations there. The great thing about COVID is we've done a lot with working remotely, and then, of course, we have a multitude of options for actually holding in-person Board meetings. And so really thankful that you, that you took your Board meetings on, on the road, so to speak. So again, the, the Board's role is to provide that overall leadership and guidance during the continuity of government operations. So you're the policy setters. So working with the Administrator on what to do and when to do it, adopt any necessary resolutions to ensure the preservation, maintenance, or reconstitution. The B OCC president, working, working with to support the County Administrator with helping to identify an alternative meeting location. Again, that helps just clarify and sort of succinct that process. And then the Administrator, as he does for you on a daily basis, or she does for you on a daily basis, activate the COG in consultation with you, execute the plan in consultation with you, including managing and coordinating government operations, perform all delegated functions by the B OCC, and then identify an alternate B OCC location as needed. Again, we didn't want to deviate from sort of, I always say, when we're in a disaster, we're basically doing what we do on a daily basis, but on steroids. And so this really just takes what, what Jeff would do on a normal basis, and just moves it up a lot quicker, and boom, 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 it's already lined out, so everybody understands what's going to happen before it happens. And, and that's really it. So that's, that's continuity of government. Again, it's covered totally by the, the ORC. We did develop a one-pager. I can show you, and this, we've done this, so as part of our, part of COG also are codifying this process. As you know, we're seeking national accreditation for the county's emergency management program in December of this year. So this requires that we document this. What it also requires, and I'll share this with you, is that we develop a procedure for that. So if I can find it here. And switch. So this is a nice, concise, we've done this with all of our stuff. So again, it doesn't have to be complicated when you're, when you're, when you're doing the emergency, and probably prefer that it doesn't. So this takes what's, what's in the plan. And so if, if for some reason, three years from now, and maybe we haven't done anything with COG in a while, Jeff needs to look at something, he can pull this one-pager out, Jackie can pull it out, and boom, 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 everybody does their, everybody does their thing. And obviously, this can be added to, but this is, again, required as part of our accreditation, but also it's just a good practice so that we can document what to do when. So, I don't know, Morgan, did you have anything you wanted to add to any of that?
I'd say the only thing I'd like to add is throughout the planning process, we had some good discussions with the prosecutor's office, the coroner, and everyone who had a role in this, and administration as well.
And Nick, the one thing I would just add, and you touched on it a bit earlier, but that this is the continuity of government plan, which is separate and distinct from the continuity of operations plan. So the Board should just be aware that, that underneath this, this continuity of government plan, all of the departments under the Board, and I'm, and I'm cognizant that, that most of our elected offices as well, are putting together or have put together continuity of operations plans, which would, which would control how those, those specific offices would function in an emergency. So for instance, if the County Administration building, we're no longer here, we need to make sure that we can operate our purchasing systems, that we can operate our HR systems, that our financial systems are all secure, et cetera. So all of those types of plans integrate with this continuity of government plan, but are occurring, and the planning for that is occurring at the individual department. And I just want to, again, thank Nick and, and Morgan for all their work on this. This is, this is tedious stuff, grinding through all this, and, and the amount of, of, of effort and time they had to put into this, I know was significant. So I want to thank both of them for, for a really good job on putting together the plan.
Yeah, ditto. I want to echo that. Thank you for bringing this to us. This is the kind of stuff we really don't like to think about, I think. You know, it's like, this is, it would be, have to be a dire situation where we need to implement some of these policies. So, so thank you for bringing this forward. Thanks for the time and effort you spent on it. Commissioners, any questions for Nick or Morgan?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you also for your hard work. This was a great, comprehensive plan. And I was thinking that, Nick, you really limited discussion on the strategies when you use that ORC. People can't go back and forth about why you're doing this or doing that. I was thinking about, as it relates to homeland security, when you say we have a list of places we can relocate, are those confidential? Because I could see that people would not need to know where all the Commissioners are if it's, if it was an emergency. Is that list open to the public?
No, so a couple of things. So obviously, I have, we have an alternate facility that, it's not necessarily, it's not advertised, or addresses in any of our plans. I meant about, as far as your meeting space, you know, we've identified, or, you know, I can just go back to where you met in the last year. I've identified several phenomenal meeting locations that we can use, and so, and a lot of them are available. Well, it's like, like any big, it's not used very often, so we can find one, and we would just simply...
Right. Yeah, I'm not thinking about availability. I know there are many places available. My question was, in an emergency where we have to flee, babe, or is the public made privy to where the president or the vice president may be?
No, not if there's an active threat to, to any of you.
Please.
Not if, not if there is an active threat to any of you.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the, I think the continuity of government plan speaks primarily to the issue of where and how public meetings will be held. So I think the ORC states that the Board can meet at any predetermined, or really any location, as long as, as long as they pass a resolution to do so. So it really is speaking more about the public meeting aspect, any type of private security, security arrangement, if there's an active threat, as Nick said, it can be held confidential.
And so I'm very much aware of what the purpose of this plan, I was looking at forward, you know, just a question, if something happened today. So I'm aware of what the plan is, I read it thoroughly, and it's a great plan. So, thank you, Morgan, also.
Commissioner Parks?
I just want to express my appreciation for the hard work that went into this. This is tedious. And so, good job.
I can credit, Morgan wrote it, Morgan did the research. I just simply, Ryan and I simply provided some of the overarching guidance, and, and, and so I really, she, she does a phenomenal job, which is why she was recently promoted.
Well, congratulations, and, and thank you so much for your work, Morgan.
Very good. Thank you. We like your map, too, your background. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, this will be on for Thursday as a, as a by leave item. And if there's any questions between now and then, just let me know, and we'll coordinate with Nick and Morgan on getting answers and responses if needed.
Um, Jeff, it actually is listed on the agenda.
Oh, do we have it, do we have it formally on the agenda? Okay, great. So.
Yeah, we got it to me in time, so it's listed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Morgan.
All right, our next item is the MSD prioritized asset renewal allowance adjustment. So we've got Mary Lynn Loder with us, Deputy Director of MSD, and I, Mary Lynn, that you're going to talk to us about the need for this one.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for putting this on your agenda today.
Diana.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see Diana.
Okay, yes, and Diana is on here as well. But I'm going to go out, and Jack is here with me, too. I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of an overview first on where we are. I did mention this in our July second quarter financial update, that this was a concern that we had, that potentially the prioritized wastewater collection allowance was going to be running short, because at that time, we had already dealt with, or had in the works about $9 million worth of emergency repairs on, on main sewers, building sewers that were related to either cave-ins, or like sewage surfacing, or sewer backups. And also, we, we had, have, have four different contractors, and at that time, in the first six months of the year, we had 12 different crews of contractors working on, on this. And because we had a lot of emergencies, we, and, and we knew that we were kind of coming to the, a point where we thought we might need more resources before the, before the year is up. However, what we did do is we scaled back some of the contractors. So where we were working at the beginning of the, the first six months of the year, we had 12 crews, we scaled that back down to eight. And, and as of right now, actually, since the beginning of September, we only have four crews doing emergency repairs. And what that results in now is we've got a lot of backlog, we have more repairs that we need to do. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've had some big cave-ins, some of those, you know, could end up being, you know, very costly repairs. At this point in time, we only have just about $600,000 remaining. The legis, I'm sorry, did you have a question? I was just going to give an overview, and then I'll, I'll open up for questions, if, if that's okay. So, yeah, so at this point, we have about $600,000 remaining, in addition to some staff labor time for the MSD workers that actually work on some of these repairs also. But we have a limited amount, and it was originally legislated at about $12 million. We did request 17. 17. So we anticipated that potentially we would need more. And the other thing I want to stress about the prioritized wastewater collection allowance is that it really is not unlike the sewer backup allowance, meaning that there are many, you know, it's really to deal with emergencies or things that really could be, be, you know, it's a near-term emergency. It's gonna, you know, something's gonna break dramatically if we don't do something now. And just like the S B U allowance, you know, we are, it's more reactionary, you know. So because of that, we can't always predict exactly how much we're going to need. We can't even really how much we need, you know, for the remainder of the year. We are asking for $5 million right now. We think that would be certainly enough to get us through the end of the year. But again, we don't know what emergencies might happen in the next, you know, three hours, three weeks, three days, three months, you know. But this should be sufficient to take us through the end of the year. Anything that's not spent for the remainder of the year, of work that isn't started by December 31st, would just go back into the reserves. So the legislation you do have today, we did provide an overview report to the county monitoring team in early September. We provided some additional responses to questions that we had a couple of weeks ago. And I think we are in agreement that we are, you know, are in need of these resources. And the county monitoring team, we met with Karen Ball, and she's satisfied with the responses on where we are with things, and would actually like your consideration for the legislation today, after receiving any, any questions you might have and responding to those.
So, Mary Lynn, could you help us better understand? Just give us an example of one project. I mean, the S B U program is something that we all clearly understand. But this is a little bit different. So give us an example of what we're talking about.
Sure. And I do have some additional, like, I have a few slides if you wanted me to bring up those, or if you'd just like me to just talk through an example.
Well, not knowing what the slides are, just go ahead and talk through an example.
Okay.
Just get the general framework here.
Sure. So we essentially have, you know, 3,000 miles worth of main sewers. And those sewers are, you know, some of them are over 50 years old, or, you know, or whatnot. And we can have a customer call in that they see sewage surfacing from someplace. And that could be, you know, along a roadway, along a ravine. It could be in, you know, coming out of a manhole or whatnot. And many times, we have cave-ins. So like, for example, a couple of weeks ago, we actually had a cave-in of a main sewer, and it could be like a sewer that's, say, 36 inches in diameter. And it's just been, like, the ground has collapsed, and there's a big hole in the ground. At that point of time, we don't really know what the extent of the emergency is or the repair is. And we literally have to use these funds to do that investigation and assign a, we have four contracts that we assign the work to, to do the investigation and the repair. All of this work is within the right-of-way. And that's really how things get started here, is that they are mains, you know, sewers that we are hearing emergencies from, either customers are calling them, are calling them in, or, you know, we are, you know, coming upon this, this situation of, again, like a cave-in, or a, could also be a sewer backup. And a customer is experiencing a sewer backup. And if it's a, it's a problem that they think it's something within the public right-of-way, we actually require that they get a plumber's, their own private plumber, to investigate that and give us a receipt that they documented it. And it's their belief that it's within the public right-of-way for us to address, because our building sewers within the public right-of-way are our responsibility to address in that scenario. So we have, we've got a breakdown of, like, all of those building sewer work. And we know that, like, for example, about 42% of the, the work that we're doing on, on building laterals using this allowance is that, that, we call it a parent work order. So the work order was first created because somebody has experienced a sewer backup. They've had a plumber come out, and the plumber has, has determined that it's actually an issue in the right-of-way, and then we have to go out and do it. So that's about 42% of the building sewers that we're addressing through this allowance. There's other situations, about, like, almost 20%, we are doing, like, launching a TV into sewer that is related to construction coordination, or some other sort of corrective repair that could also be related to a sewer backup. And then, there's about, say, 15% of this building sewers are associated with a cave-in. And, and then we have sewage surfacing. That might be like 10% of those building sewers.
Okay. Thank you.
But overall, overall, we have, I can, actually, this, I could just show you, like, where the work really has been done. And this might be of interest. See, right there, I think. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So there's a map of, of, of the county, obviously, in the, our sewer district. And all of those dots represent all of the locations that we have spent the prioritized wastewater collection allowance this year. And again, the allowance is specifically meant to address emergency issues that routinely arise on, on main sewers or building laterals in the right-of-way. And, and so as of this, as of, I think it was early in September, we have rehabbed or renewed 13,440 linear feet of, of main sewers, and, and 7,850 of building sewers. The colors represent essentially a classification of, of what the risk categorization is of that particular asset. So red, orange, yellow are, are higher-risk assets. And, and then the, the green are lower risk, but also if the failure happened, that it could be a higher consequence, or, you know, it's just, you know, we do have this data. And also, I want to say, we haven't necessarily always had this. You know, our staff is working really hard to try to get some good stats and better understanding of, you know, how and where and why we're expending this stuff. And we will be reporting this on a more regular basis to the, to the county through our enterprise management system.
All right. Great. Thank you. And before we get to questions, Karen Ball is on the line. Karen, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I'll add is that, in the course of the 2020 C I P approval, we worked with MSD to consolidate three different allowance categories to this one category. So while it is a large dollar amount, there, there were three separate categories in the past that would deal with separately, building sewers, then main lines sewers with a different allowance. This change was requested by MSD for accounting purposes. And the ongoing and future reporting will be really helpful for us to track, to make sure that you don't get these last-minute requests for funds that have been depleted. And we can make sure that they're being used in the appropriate ways.
Okay, great. And yeah, my understanding is that, you know, much like the S B U program, we allot dollars as needed. So, you know, we were optimistic towards the beginning of the year that we wouldn't need this much money, and here we are. So it's not that big of a deal, really. It's just a matter of resizing the budget. So, any questions or comments, Commissioners?
Thank you, Madam President. And I really do think it's a big deal. You know, we talk about the flow of the water, but quite as it is kept, the county does not have a constant flow of money. I have no quest, I have no reason to question the need to have these projects done. But my concern is, who should pay for it? I mean, should we, you know, take it out of our pot, or is there another pot that we need to access to be able to pay for this? And I have mentioned this to the administrator. We can't keep paying for these projects. And we have maybe some monies in a pot that could be used if we were just given the money. And so, by other entities. So I'm just going to leave it at that. I mean, MSD, you continue to come for projects and S B U projects that need to be done. But at one point, what point are we going to say that we want to be given the money that's already been put into the system? Nothing that Diana or Mary Lynn can handle. But it is a big deal, because we keep taking out of our purse, instead of getting it from other entities that may owe us some money. So it's a big deal for me. And so that's all I have right now. I would like to see that map. Mary Lynn, you explain, not now, but you can say to me, you explain the code. So I was going to ask, what is the code? So it's very clear what it is. I thank you for that explanation. But if I could get that map, it would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Parks? You're muted.
You're muted.
Commissioner, you're muted. There we go.
There we are. Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for your presentation, Mary Lynn. I'm not inclined to approve more money. Like the President said, we provide money as in, you know, when it's needed. So I would be a no vote. That's all.
Thank you. All right.
Madam President, if I, a couple of things, just in terms of, one, administrative matter, actually, three things. First administrative matter to the point of need, I just wanted to make sure that I heard Mary Lynn correct, is that there, the total initial budget on this was 12 million, correct? And you will have, how much, how much is left in the, in the fund right now?
Right now, approximately $600,000. And I can also just maybe summarize a little bit more in terms of the types of projects that are, you know, are funded by this. There's actually, like, if we have a collapse of a portion of the sewer, which we actually have, like, in the last, this time last year, we had several manholes that, you know, are connected to main sewers that collapsed. And I think within, like, literally, we had three or four of them collapse, all spread out probably, you know, over a course of six weeks. Those three or four manholes wound up costing about $1.5 million. That's the kind of stuff that, that really we cannot plan, that's going to happen. We try to address things before they fail. But because of the age and the condition of our sewers, just, we're never going to not have emergencies. And that's what this money is for. This isn't really a consent decree project, essentially keeping things flowing. Otherwise, we're going to have, you know, sewage running all over in some cases, if we don't have the resources to, to repair them. We had a situation in, on Dana Avenue across from Xavier University, again, about a year ago, maybe two years ago. That was a major collapse that cost about $800,000. And those are MSD sewers in the public right-of-way, and impact traffic, they impact how people get places, they impact how people, you know, do their regular life.
So Mary Lynn, if I could, just from a, from the, and I realize that this, that the spend on this is random many times, because you're dealing with emergency repairs, you're dealing with urgent issues.
I would use the term reactive.
Yeah. But if you just look at it from the perspective of your burn rate on this over the course of the year, you've expended essentially 12 million on these projects over the course of seven months. So you're burning roughly 1.6, 1.7 million a year. So I just, from the board's perspective, I just want to say, 600, Mary Lynn started by saying they have 600,000 left, which, depending upon the program, that can be a lot of, that can be a lot of money sitting, sitting there. But in this particular program, they're burning about $1.7 million a month. It's not as much as it sounds like. So from that perspective, I just wanted to advise the board that in terms of MSD having the dollars, it needs to respond to urgent capacity issues. But in this particular case, they're pretty close to the bottom of the well on those dollars.
If I could comment, Mary Lynn, I think you did a great job explaining the necessity for the money in the project. So you did great with that. And I just want to say, I agree with you that we don't want walls falling, retaining walls falling down. But I think there's another option, rather than us footing the bill again, when we have money for MSD that we need to be given back to the county, because we're owed that money. And we cannot keep going to our well, when there's another well that has MSD money. So that has nothing to do with you or Diana. Because I certainly don't want our residents to be impacted by that. So we just need to figure it out and make some demands.
Okay. So Jeff, remind me of the process here. We don't have a resolution in front of us.
No.
So I, and I, Mary Lynn and Diane, I understand the idea that the money will be sitting to the side in the case of an emergency, right? So the idea is to put money to the side. If we need it, it rolls over to the next budget if we don't use it. So Jeff, talk to me about timing here.
Yeah. So timing, in this particular case, you do have, I believe it was, an attachment, you have a fact sheet and a resolution.
On item two. It is, it is, it is supported there.
Yeah. So there, so there is a resolution for action today. The board's still inclined. If the board has additional questions, we could hold until Thursday. Again, I just want to say that, as Mary Lynn indicated, some of these projects, to the degree there is a failure, in likelihood of that over the next two days, I don't know, who knows what that is. But some of these can be significant dollar value, and we, we are close to expending through that entire fund at this point. So, but if there are additional questions, the board would like to hold till Tuesday. We could certainly, we could certainly do that. But you do have the resolution in front of you today. From, for what it's worth, the administration would be supportive of acting on the item. But again, if the board has questions, we can certainly attempt to answer those between now and Thursday.
Madam President, if I could, and Jeff was saying, if something happens in the next couple of days, and so, well, there's 600,000 in there now. If there is an emergency where something has to be done immediately, I'm sure, can't speak for the entire board, we're not going to let that emergency just sit without us doing anything. But currently, I'm not ready to vote on it.
Okay. So I hear the board saying, we would like to hold for two days. We'll take it up on Thursday as a by leave item to the regular agenda, and ask questions in the meantime, if necessary, and then be ready to act on Thursday.
I would also, I said I had two items, Madam President, that, actually, three, I'll hold on one of them. But the second item is separate but related. It's just another MSD item that will come by leave on Thursdays. We have an approval resolution for a roughly $97 million bond refunding initiative that we're working on. It should produce somewhere in the magnitude of $12 million of net present value savings. That will come forward to the board on Thursday as well. In the meantime, we'll work with the board on any questions relating to this particular item today.
Very good.
If I might comment, Jeff, I thought I heard you say that you recommended a vote today.
I recommend approval of the, of the item. If the board is not prepared to vote on it today, certainly on Thursday, I'd be happy to talk through the board, or through any questions with the board on it between now and then. I wasn't necessarily indicating today, Commissioner, but we do have it for your approval today, if you'd like to approve it. But the administration does recommend approval of the item. I think, being down to 600,000, we've got October, November, and December, I think that fund is going to need additional dollars before the end of the year. We want to make sure it has the dollars if necessary. So I was speaking to the need in the, in that particular account, whether it's today or Thursday, if there's questions that the board has, we certainly want to make sure those are answered before you vote. are answered before you vote.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you both for being here and Jack as well. We'll take, dial him up on. All right, we're gonna move on to our next item. This is the Care Humane Society Dog Warden and Shelter Update.
I believe, Madam President, we have Carolyn Evans on the line. I just wanna say, thank you, I'm sorry, just wanna say thank you to Carolyn. Budget Director Brugan and myself have been meeting regularly with Carolyn just to talk about the transition status of our dog warden functions. I think there's a lot of really good news to report. We still have some issues in front of us as well, but really happy that Carolyn could join us today to talk through some of the progress that's been made in the transitioning of this function. So Carolyn, I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. I wanna start by thanking the Commissioners for making time on your agenda today. I'm always happy to have a bit of time to share the good work that's happening at the shelter and answer any questions you might have. As Jeff said, I'm Carolyn Evans, I'm the Executive Director of Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society, and we are the new operator for animal services in Hamilton County. And for those people that are chiming in, I guess, on your live stream, I think it's probably worth mentioning that, what that means. That means that we run animal care and control, also referred to as dog warden services, and also animal sheltering for the county. Our officers are the ones that pick up strays in the field. They also respond to calls about cruelty and neglect for all animals. And we take in strays at the shelter as well, at the facility on Colrain Avenue in Northside. That is what we are required to do by contract. Going back to our, I guess, our contract, which started about two months ago now, I would like to commend the county for continuing your partnership with a humane society, as you've done for decades with SPCA Cincinnati. Because when you have a humane society partner, not only does the county benefit from those contracted services that I just outlined, but then you have the additional benefit of additional services that a humane society performs in commitment to our own mission and at no cost to the county. And those are, those services include things like taking an owner's surrender of animals, keeping animals alive, and finding a live outcome for them beyond the state mandated three-day stray hold, responding to wildlife calls, we're doing a lot of that. And also caring for cats in the shelter and outside of the shelter, community cats are what a lot of people refer to as feral cats. And these are all services that the humane society does, takes on voluntarily, but we can really only do that with the support of the broader community. Because it is fundraising dollars and grants that fund those kind of services. And we are still so new, as I mentioned, we've actually been running the shelter now, I guess, about seven weeks. And as an entity, we've been dedicated to service in Hamilton County for really just a few months now. And the reason that I think it's important to mention that to the people of Hamilton County is so that they can understand, we've only just recently been established as a humane society for Hamilton County. So our fundraising dollars and hence our ability to provide those additional services is limited right now. That said, we've already been able to provide a very high level of service for basic operations, and we're building momentum rather quickly. So we thank the people of Hamilton County for coming to our support. And despite that limited funding that we have right now, we've been able to achieve a record-setting live release rate of 98% in the Northside Shelter. And that means that 98% of the animals that are leaving the building are leaving the building alive. And we've been able to do that really because of hard work, creativity, community support, and some new programming. And for those who may be watching and may not know this, our leadership team also runs Claremont County. We run, we run animal services for Claremont County, animal services, same thing, animal shelter and dog warden services. And we do that under our sister organization, Claremont Animal Care Humane Society. And when the opportunity arose for us to bid on services in Hamilton County, my home county, we were eager to expand our lifesaving footprint to Hamilton County. And we're working really hard rolling out those same lifesaving programs here in Hamilton County that have been so successful for us in Claremont. In Claremont, we've achieved that 98% live release rate, that save rate for both dogs and cats. We've achieved that consistently for three years in a row now. And we know it can be done here in Hamilton County. Our early success in Hamilton County really has been primarily due to leveraging the existing relationships that we came to this contract with, our existing relationships with our rescue partners. And we have transferred more than 350 animals to our rescue partners in the past two months. And this is a model of, this sort of rescue shelter partnership is critical, life, critical to lifesaving and to no-kill animal sheltering. And it's a model, like I said, that we've sort of brought that over from Claremont County. It's what's kept our head above water for these first two months. We have also had good response from the community. We've had people that have been stepping forward to open up their homes in their hearts to be a foster family or to adopt an animal. And that's where we really need, we really need to get to. As I said, the response has been good, but it hasn't been great just yet. I think people still don't know who we are and what we're doing there. We need to be able to explain to the community a little bit more about this transition. Like I said, we've been able to, we've been able to keep those animals alive, we've been able to maintain that lifesaving rate. But in order for us to sustain this, we've not, we need to expand our reach into the community. We're gonna continue these kind of programs that help animals in the shelter. We soon hope to be able to expand our programming outside of the shelter, which is what we're able to do in Claremont right now, and that is to provide help and support for animals before they even come to our doors. Obviously, the space within the shelter is limited by the four walls within the shelter. In order for us to be a true lifesaving community, that lifesaving has to happen outside of the building as well. And we're getting there, but like I said, we just need to, we need to get to the point where the community understands who we are and what we're doing. We actually have an exciting new initiative that we are thrilled to be a part of. We were selected as one of 18 shelters in all of North America to be a Tier One city for an exciting new initiative called Human Animal Support Services. And it's all about helping people in the community and helping animals outside of the shelter before they even get to the shelter. So we're really focused on keeping animals in their homes. And that's a really critical program for us. It's kind of like, our field is rapidly evolving and it's, and we've had to make a big shift during COVID and really focus on what's happening outside of the shelter. And it's very aligned with, with what we do as an organization. I wanted to tell, tell you a little bit about our philosophy and our approach to animal sheltering. And it's aligned with this community-based approach in both field operations and also animal sheltering. Our intent is to deliver a true lifesaving community resource center to the people and the animals of Hamilton County. And the only way we're gonna do it is through partnership, partnership with lots of entities. And one of the main ones is the partnership with the county. So we're very appreciative of the partnership that we have established and we're working towards, as Jeff said, we appreciate the opportunities that we've had to work with Jeff, Jeff and John. And really, they've been great, they've rolled up their sleeves, the facilities folks that we're working with have really made a commitment to transforming animal services for Hamilton County. So we're thankful for that. It's gonna happen through partnership, through transparency, and through accountability. As I mentioned just a moment ago, animal services really is a rapidly evolving field. Gone are the days of the dog pound and the dog catcher. And we're doing everything that we can to stay on top of industry trends and best practices and deliver exceptional contemporary animal services to our community. One of the biggest challenges that we're facing right now, though, is that people just do not know who we are, they don't understand what we do. There's been a lot of confusion around the transition. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and speak to the residents of Hamilton County on this note through this forum, so thank you. I think it's important to be able to make the distinction between who we are, Cincinnati Animal Care, and SPCA Cincinnati, because SPCA has been synonymous with the county shelter for so long. This is something that we get calls about every single day. And people even ask us, are you, are you the new SPCA? And to help clarify, we are not, we are not the new SPCA. SPCA was the county animal services provider for decades, for 70 years. And SPCA is still in existence. They are a private humane society. They still operate out of their Sharonville facility, but they are no longer affiliated with Hamilton County Animal Services. Cincinnati Animal Care is the animal services provider for Hamilton County. We're the new provider, the only provider for that service. We operate out of the Northside Building that the SPCA had occupied for so long. All the animal control officers work for us, all the stray dogs should be coming to us. In short, the Northside Shelter, the existing shelter on Colrain Avenue, is under new management. And we're committed to a philosophy of no-kill animal services. The definite, a lot of people have heard that, a lot of times, we get phone calls and people say, are you, are you a no-kill shelter? The definition of no-kill is that we do not prematurely end the life of an animal that is healthy, treatable, and safe to return to the community. And we are bringing back the true definition of euthanasia, which is ending suffering. This does not mean that we do not euthanize animals, because we do when it's necessary. Just like I would end the suffering of my own animal in my home if it was irremediably suffering and had no prognosis, I would take my animal to the vet and I would, and I would give them really that gift of euthanasia to end their suffering. We would, it doesn't mean that we put dangerous animals into the community either. What it means is that when we do end a life at the shelter, it's because that animal is suffering. And as a no-kill shelter that's committed to really best, the best practice national definition of no-kill sheltering, what it means is that we don't euthanize an animal for space and we don't euthanize an animal for convenience. Every treatable animal is treated, every trainable animal is trained, and every savable animal that comes through the doors of the Northside Shelter is going to be saved. I'm getting a little bit detailed here, but I think it's important because we get this, we get these questions all the time. No-kill is not a magic number. Although in our industry, for ease of conversation, and I think we even talked about this when we were in the bid process, a lot of people hear that there's this 90% live release rate and that's considered no-kill. And again, that means that 90% of the animals that are leaving the building alive, that are leaving the building are leaving alive. But it's just a target. As I told you, we've been able to save 98% of the animals. So if we hit a 90% live release rate, we're not no-kill. It would mean that those 8% of those animals that could have been saved, were not saved. No-kill is, it's a benchmark, that 90% is a benchmark, and it's something for shelters to aim for and to kind of gauge their, their results against other shelters across the country. But that number is unique to every community. And it's really just more of a way of doing business than trying to get to some arbitrary number. And while we're still so new, and I don't know that that 98% ratio is gonna hold, you know, we know that in these first two months that we have to be saving 98% of the animals in the Northside Shelter to really, truly be able to say that we are, that we're no-killing it, right? That we're, that we're, that we are not killing animals in our shelter, we're only euthanizing when it's absolutely necessary. So I wanted to explain that because, again, we have lots of questions about that all the time. We have questions about who we are, we have questions about our, the transition. And right now, that's really our biggest challenge. And what I would like to do is invite the community to come in and see what the, what, see the changes at the shelter. People may have visited the Northside Shelter a year ago, a decade ago, or even a couple months ago, but there's really a lot that's changing right now. And we're working hard in conjunction with the county, helping, they're doing, you're doing great things, helping to clean up and upgrade the facility for the animals and for our visitors. And so many, many things goes out to you for your commitment to making some of these critical changes. In these first couple of months, we've seen asbestos remediation, your staff are, they're regularly working on indoor climate control and air quality improvements. And again, this is for the benefit of not only the animals, but the staff and the visitors that are coming into the building. And while the county is working really hard making those changes on the facilities, our staff are doing what we can to really improve the living, the living facilities, the living quarters, and the situation for the animals. We have purchased through the support of a new friends group and the community, of course, we've purchased beds for all the dogs to get them off the concrete floor. This is, this really helps in both cold weather and also warm weather. When it's, when it's hot, you've got the animals uplifted and they've got air circulating. It makes living in a concrete kennel more comfortable for animals, especially for senior animals. We've also made a commitment to minimizing the number of animals that are co-kennelled. We have been able to humanely maintain the population at the shelter so that we can ensure that every single animal has their own living space, which is a safety factor for us and a comfort factor. We are providing daily enrichment for the animals, both in the kennel and outside of the kennels. And we've been able to do this because we've put a plan in place that really involves the community and it invites them to be part of this transformation. And probably every time you talk to someone from Claremont Animal Care, you will hear us say that no-kill is a community ethic. It's not something that we are gonna do to the community. We know that we can't do this alone. It takes not only our staff, but it takes a commitment by the county, which we have. It takes volunteers, fosters, owners, sponsors, rescue partners, and it takes committed citizens that truly want to become a no-kill community. The Northside Shelter is everyone's shelter. We hope to see, we hope to see some of the Commissioners out there to visit us. I know Sonya Taylor was out recently. Invite you to come and visit us anytime, and we hope that the community comes out and supports us and sees the changes at the shelter. So thank you again for the time to share what we're doing with, with everyone in Hamilton County.
Yeah, thank you, Carolyn. So remind us of the address of the facility.
3949 Colrain Avenue in Northside. Zip code is 45223. If you don't put that in, it's gonna send you up north to the other 3949 Colrain Avenue.
All right. Hey, give us the hours of operation for people that wanna come visit.
We are there from 12 to 6, seven days a week. We have appointments, but we're also accepting walk-ins. And please visit us, cincinnatianimalcare.org and find us on Facebook. Right now, that's the best way that we can get information out to the community on what we're doing and the changes, and the best way that the community can help us sort of get that ball rolling and expanding our reach into the community is through our Facebook right now.
Okay, great. And I'm, I'm just gonna make a quick request that next time you bring an animal with you, so.
I will.
I was sure you would have a puppy.
Well, I have to pop home for this meeting because we don't have a reception at the shelter right now. That's something that we're working on, but I didn't want the call to drop.
All right, well, I, so next time you visit, please, maybe a dog and a cat perhaps. But yeah, I've actually been down to the facility, it's been a little while ago, so I have to come back. So Commissioners, comments?
Just a couple of comments, Madam President. First of all, just really happy to have you guys there. I see the improvements I saw about the unique donations as it relates to the beds for the animals. And I was thinking, I went there for years and they were on concrete and really never thought about it, and that was just an awesome idea to, and if people want to donate more beds, how would they do that? Just call your number, your direct number?
We have, no, actually, what they should do is follow us on Facebook. We have a Wednesday wishlist and we have all of our, and I will say, we're pretty good on beds. We are, we've got a bed for every single kennel now, though, they are industrial strength shelter beds. Eventually, they will be worn out, so we have a few extras. But right now, we're shifting our gears and we're good for beds and we're moving on to the next high priority item.
Very good. And you talked about not wanting to displace animals, and we were very adamant about the staff that were there and not wanting to displace the staff unless we had to. So I think it's very important that we indicate that you tried also very hard to keep the staff that were there, that could stay and that were experienced. And I think that's really important that you did that. So thank you so much.
We have community staff there, and we're really happy to be working with them. And yeah, I know that was something that you wanted to do, it was something that we wanted to do, and to make it work together.
Great.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes, welcome, Carolyn. Thank you so much for coming. Sonya Taylor told me what a wonderful time she had. Sonya Taylor told me what a wonderful time she had when she visited the facility and was looking forward to you presenting today. So thank you for coming.
Oh, of course. I was really glad she and her son came out and were able to, able to see the animals. You're welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I know if I come, I'm going to leave with something. Can't do that. I love dogs.
In advance, we have do not adopt bracelets for.
Right.
Community, yeah. Well, yeah, and so the whole idea here is to introduce you to the community and encourage them to come visit. So thank you for the presentation and thank you for the information. Say your website one more time for us.
CincinnatiAnimalCare.org.
Here we go. Okay, and Bridget, I know you're on. Please, let's, maybe we can post that on the website to make that quickly available to folks that would like to come visit. So thanks again, Carolyn. Thanks for the work. Thanks to your team and we're likely to see you soon.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again. And again, we really appreciate the partnership with the county. It makes all the difference to know that this is something that you value. And we're going to save lives together. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on. All right, our last item is the CARES Act update. And I know Jeff is on and I suppose Holly is on too.
Holly is on also. So yes, commissioners, I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with CARES Act distribution, as well as a lead-in to a couple of buy-leave items for Thursday. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Hold on one second here. Okay, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so just a couple of quick, I'm not going to go through every CARES Act program. As the board knows by now, there's, you know, 30 some odd of them. But I just want to highlight a couple of things. But first and foremost, just to emphasize again, I think I've said this every time we've talked about our CARES program. I couldn't be more proud of what we're doing here. This is an opportunity that we did not expect in January. We did not plan for it. We certainly didn't want it as a community in terms of the pandemic. But the dollars in partnership with the federal government that have come to the county, I think, again, I couldn't be more proud of how, from the board through to the CARES Act team that's implementing this, there's just been a unity of purpose in getting these dollars into the hands of people and the purposes that really need them. So I'm going to walk through just real quick a couple of updates of a few things, ask Holly to chime in in a couple of places as well. And before I go on, I just again, want to thank Holly, who has lived and breathed this program from the time that the CARES Act came on. I'm half inclined at times during the weekend to email her back and say, go do something other than work, because she's working on this nonstop 24/7. So Holly, thank you for everything that you're doing. And not to discount the work of your team as well. And you've got a great team working for you, who honestly, we pulled out of the ranks of the organization. So these are not CARES Act specialists. These are not federal grant specialists. These are people that work within the county organization who have teamed up to implement this program. And I want to thank them as well. So just a couple of things to highlight. PPE procurement, we continue to serve as the hub for PPE procurement in the county. As Nick would tell you, we've assisted 421 organizations with PPE services. You know, we, I think as Nick has also said, we can't serve as the constant supplier of every organization out there, but we can get you started with a supply of PPE. We can get you off and running with sanitizing equipment, that type of thing. And the amount of, the good that this has done in terms of letting organizations get back to work has just been incredible. Holly is serving his point right now on the, on the testing program that we have. We have, and I always like to include the testing, the quarantine, and the contact tracing really is a consolidated testing program. It's about a $20 million testing program we have. Holly, you want to just give a brief update on pop-up sites, that type of thing? As it relates to the website where people can go to find the pop-up sites through the Health Collaborative?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we're really thrilled with the work that the Health Collaborative is doing in starting to ramp up their testing. This has been, as you can understand, a huge undertaking with all of the hospital systems. And so we're grateful for the partnership with the Health Collaborative. I think as most of you know, but hopefully for those listening, if you are looking for a testing site, please go to the Health Collaborative's website, Test and Protect. And you will see on their updated lists of where you can go to get tested, the dates, the times, the hours. They are working closely with community partners to get more testing sites set up on a permanent basis. And we have, you'll see again, additional communications going out to residents on where to go. And I actually had my notes in front of me and I've lost the list of sites for this week. I apologize. But I will have the website up here in a second and to make sure.
HealthCollab.org-testandprotect, right? Holly, so if you, that's a mouthful. So if you can get, if you can get it.
Got it. I apologize. I had a.
Got it. Did I hit, did I hit that correctly?
And the upcoming sites, so just a few of the permanent sites include every Sunday from 10 to 2, they are at the Hamilton County Justice Center, conducting testing every Sunday as well from 3 to 7 at St. Ignatius of Loyola School. Every Tuesday from 9 to 1 at Inspirational Bible Church in Forest Park. Every Wednesday from 9 to 1 at Talbert House in Western Hills. And every Thursday from 9 to 1 at Talbert House in Walnut Hills. And then again, on Thursdays, they are back at Inspirational Bible Church in Forest Park from 1 to 5. So again, some of these are very permanent. You can count on them if you're looking for a site. And then they're just filling those in constantly as they get more and more community partners. So it's really starting to ramp up. Again, hats off to the Health Collaborative and all their partners, all the healthcare partners for getting this program moving. We continue to work on ramping up testing. The turnaround times are improving. So things are looking really, really great on that end.
Thanks, Holly. Let's see, moving on to the next slide, just wanted to highlight, again, I'm not going to go through all of these. But one thing we haven't really talked about a whole lot is we've got a lot of different organizations in the county, some of who we work with very directly, who have been impacted by this, that we've never really done a deep dive on. But for instance, the Council on Aging, who through the Senior Services Levy, does a lot of work as it relates to outreach to seniors, health needs of seniors, providing meals and medical needs to seniors. They have seen a different type of demand and an increase in needs relating to even things like how they go about providing meals to seniors to accommodate for the pandemic. They don't want to have daily frequent reaction or interactions with the senior population. So they've had to switch to a more shelf-stable meal. There were some additional costs to. There were additional costs associated with telemedicine needs that they have. So we've been working with the Council on Aging, as well as Development and Disability Services and the Mental Health Recovery and Services Board to identify the additional needs that they have that are COVID-related and making sure that they are funded for those increased needs so that they can respond to their target populations appropriately. Let's see, some of the programs that you are a little bit more familiar with, or the community might be more familiar with, rental assistance. We are estimated to spend $7 million on rental assistance. 459 households helped so far. So Holly, any, this has been one that we've been scaling up very quickly here. Anything you want to say about rental assistance?
Yeah, I will say that we meet with the rental assistance providers every Thursday. So we'll have updated numbers tomorrow. It is, I think, as we, you've heard from the Community Action Agency Director, Mark Lawson, this is a lot of work for our providers and they're stepping up and ramping up their programs to speed up the number of residents that they're able to help.
Thanks, Holly. Nonprofit assistance, we've broken, I've broken this out here. We have $4 million that are going to help. Right now, we've got 59 approved and we've got seven in the final stages of review. But we've also broken that out because the board, at the urging of Commissioner Summer Dumont's Express Day and policy priority related to youth programs. And we recognize that a lot of the nonprofit grants that we, nonprofit applications we were receiving were targeted towards youth programs. So I've broken those out. We're still looking at other options for youth programming as well. But I just wanted to be, I wanted to be deliberate in showing that at this point, we spent, or we're preparing to allocate around $1 million for various youth programs that have come in through our nonprofit program, as well as 59 other nonprofit organizations that have been impacted by COVID-19 that we're looking to support as well.
And Jeff, if you don't mind if I add something really quickly, we also, as part of the nonprofit, are awarding roughly $200,000 for domestic violence as well.
Yes, thank you, Holly. Appreciate that. Facility improvements. So we've got around $1.8 million targeted towards various facility improvements. We have new HVAC filter systems that we're going to be installing that are more conducive to getting the proper airflow so that it's conducive to not spreading the virus within facilities. An upgrade to our phone system to allow for a better telework environment. We are seeing in some departments anywhere from 80 to 90% of individuals in those departments who are, who continue to telework. It could stay that way for quite some time, if not in perpetuity in some of these departments. And so it's imperative that our phone system be able to accommodate business operations for those individuals who are undergoing, who are in a telework environment. And currently, the phone system that we have gets overburdened with call forwarding and some other, and really lacks some of the higher-end features that we need for a real telecommute environment. Touchless fixtures, this is one I wanted to hit on quickly. At a prior staff meeting, we had talked about working a contract through county facilities to upgrade the fixtures in many of our buildings, 800 Broadway, the courthouse, and the administration building so that these are touchless fixtures. So that when you go to turn on the faucet, you don't actually have to touch, touch the fixture. We have a, that contract has been approved by the Prosecutor's Office and we are prepared to bring that forward as a buy-leave on Thursday so that we can get that project started. And finally, public, we have, we have funding that is being allocated to offset the cost of our public safety personnel. This is one that we've been holding off on a little bit, pending guidance from the Treasury Department and the Office of the Inspector General. We have recently, just within the past week, received some additional guidance from the OIG indicating that those dollars could be allocated as previously, as we had previously thought. So that is a little bit about the, some of the items that we are implementing. The touchless fixture contract, which we'd like to bring forward on Thursday. Another item that we, that is not on this list that we would like to bring forward on Thursday is over the past couple of weeks, the administration has been looking at the concept of a grant for the, for arts and culture, cultural and arts institutions in the community. These institutions really fell outside the scope of our small business program and fell outside the scope of our nonprofit program. Yet these are also institutions that are tremendously important to the local economy. They support a lot of jobs. They are the type of institutions that we intuitively would think we would want up and functioning when the economic recovery in this community really, really takes hold. They're some of the most important and vibrant institutions in our community. Yet at the same time, they really fell outside the scope of any of our existing grant programs. So we do have a grant program that we are prepared to bring forward on Thursday. Really, the buy-leave action that the board would need to take would be simply amending the CARES Act plan that we have to add. Right now, Holly and I are still discussing a final number, but it's probably going to be between $3 and $4 million to add a culture and arts support program into the county's CARES Act programming. Holly, over the weekend, had pulled together a synopsis of where we are from a funding perspective. And we still do have some dollars that have, that continue to fall to the bottom line that would be capable of supporting this. So we will bring this forward on Thursday, but certainly between now and then. Either Holly or I are happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the program we are, we're contemplating. But again, more of that to come after the board provides the general approval for funding the program. And with that, that concludes the CARES Act update. Holly, anything else you would add? I know I'm, I'm not going to ask you if I missed anything. I know I missed a lot. So anything in particular you, as the, as the main implementer of this, would like to, would like to highlight?
I think the only other thing that we are looking at and hope to bring forward shortly is some, a grant potentially for organizations to expand their existing Wi-Fi network to allow for more public access for Wi-Fi. We're working closely with Joy and we have had this come forward as a need, especially for some organizations that are providing remote student help for organizations that are allowing people to come in and use, access their internal Wi-Fi for workforce development initiatives or to access social services. And so one, one thought for these grant dollars is to seek, provide funding to organizations to allow them to enhance their existing network, to potentially allow them to expand their Wi-Fi outside their building to stretch, stretch the signal out into, say, maybe next to a recreation center and there's a park or to a parking lot. A couple hundred feet out is one thing that we, some of our stakeholders in the community have come forward as a need that was not needed before COVID-19. So that's something, just so you all are aware, that we are looking into as well.
And Holly, the very last thing I would, first of all, thank you for that because that was a major one that I did forget. And just as the board has been actively tracking the next steps on this in terms of additional stimulus packages, et cetera. And where I believe that there was a new Democratic proposal yesterday in Congress relating to another version of the HEROES Act, I think is, as it was called, that was submitted yesterday. I think it's a lower dollar amount than the previous version. I think the previous version was north of 3 trillion. I think this one may be just north of 2. But it also, I believe, has as one of its elements the extension of the timeframe through 2021 for spending these current dollars, which as we have said and as we have indicated to our delegation, is one of the more important things that can be done right now for the county to ensure that the dollars that we have programmed through this, through this round of CARES Act funding can be adequately utilized and make it into the hands and for the purposes that would really do some good, whether it's testing, rental assistance, et cetera. If we can get a little bit more time in implementing, it's going to really help us execute and get these dollars on the street. So with that, Commissioner is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. Holly, reiterate the members of the team, will you, that are helping with this?
Absolutely.
If there's repeating. Talk about all these programs that have been rolled out in such a short time. I, you know, the work that you all are doing 24/7 is really, you know, impressive and we're very grateful that as policy setters, you know, we have the easier job, I think, of saying, hey, this, how about this? And you bring things to us and we're happy to approve of things that make sense in this community. But you're doing the work behind the scenes. So please read off their names.
Yes, thank you. It's a great team, you're right. We have Brian Walmsley with Planning and Development, Michelle Baltz and Ally Coadag with Environmental Services, Jen Ketter, Rob Wagner, John Brugan, and Lisa Webb, all with our Budget Office, Bert Watts with Facilities, Melanie Augustine with EMA, and Cindy Fazio, who has been tremendous from a legal perspective, and Jay Wampler with the Prosecutor's Office. And of course, this doesn't include our community development team of Joy Pearson, Bubacar Diallo, and Emily Carnahan, who have been tremendous with the nonprofit grants and many other rental assistance. They've really stepped up with their expertise on these. assistance. They've really stepped up with their expertise on these individual programs. And finally, David Edenfield with our web developer, he's been phenomenal, making sure we figure out how to get these applications online. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but it's been a tremendous, tremendous team and honored to work alongside them.
Yeah, Holly, if I could, just, just real quickly, and I think, you know, in terms of other people out there, the interesting thing about this, this program is, there's probably not a whole lot of departments out there that haven't been touched in some way, shape, or form. So, you know, Robert Bell and Office of Diversity and Inclusion, our JFS staff, have been heavily involved. We've worked with, we've worked with the courts on different programs. So there's very few entities out there that haven't been touched in some way on this. So just want to thank everybody who's been a part of it, because it truly is a case of everyone steering and growing in the same direction. So, and thanks to the Commissioners for your, for your policy guidance on it. All of this stems from the initial plan that you all put together and that we're now implementing.
And Bridget Darty.
Yeah, thank you. I was, I meant to say, and Bridget.
Yeah. Well, and you're right. I mean, you know, there have been so many people involved, and our nonprofit and for-profit partners out in the community that helped us, Health Collaborative is a good example, Free Store Food Bank, Talbert, CAA, Legal Aid, I mean, yeah, because the list goes on and on. So anyway, I just, I think every now and then, you know, we just have to be reminded of the mammoth effort that is happening here at the county to make sure that we're responding to the needs of people during a pandemic. And we're grateful for the federal dollars. We hope to get additional dollars and additional flexibility and more time. But with that said, we're grateful for the initial round of dollars that have been so helpful. So thanks for everything. And so Commissioners, comments, questions related to any of those items?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, words cannot express the hard work that you guys have done to meet the needs of those people in Hamilton County. So I certainly appreciate it. I had heard, I think Jeff ended with the arts and cultural monies that we're looking at allocating, $3 to $4 million. And I certainly agree that that was an area that we have forgotten. It not only generates revenue, but also it provides entertainment. And so when we provide that entertainment, we reduce the stress, or hopefully your mental health, where you are, will be much better. I would like to ask, and I talked to Jeff yesterday about, as he introduced this, the possibility, to me, that I'm very thankful on the allocation for the youth, but the areas that we are covering, they really don't cover what their entertainment is. Not a lot of them like to go to the symphony, some of them do, but I thought about the young people who are involved in organized sports activities, soccer, diving, football, cheerleaders, who for whatever reason, their sponsors might have been business people or individual people, whose, their companies have fallen, or either personally. Those people who donate to those young people have not been able to do that. And I was reading and researching about the fact that most of their funding comes from selling tickets or fundraisers, and they have not been able to do that. So my request is that we add some additional funding for those sports and activity organizations of youth that have not, for whatever reason, received the funding they would normally get for their equipment, or for the areas in, that they use, like I said, soccer, diving, cheerleading, going to competition, because there are, I was reading the state organization for the football leagues, and they were saying they cannot, no longer pay for the memberships that they normally do. So I'm not saying that we need to, of course, pay for all organization, there are so many, but if they can justify and show that they normally get a donation of however much money from this organization, and now the organization is defunct, that we could possibly help to move those young people forward to do the things that they love. So that's what I'd like to introduce, and I had introduced it to Jeff yesterday of a possibility to do that.
Silence.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so if we could obviously look into that and see, you know, it qualifies, then yeah. So Holly, Jeff, I assume you're already working on that.
Yeah, I mentioned it, Commissioner, to Holly this morning, so we're going to start looking into that. Commissioner Summer Dumas, we want to talk with you a little bit more just to make sure we're looking at it in the right way and hitting the, the policy goal as you've outlined, and so we can appropriately check it against eligibility. My screen just shifted, I'm sorry, et cetera. So we'll be back in touch with you on that, but certainly did not, did not forget about it, and I passed it along. I had a discussion with Holly this morning, so we'll get back to the Board on it shortly.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Summer Dumas, is that the end of your comments?
That's it.
All right. Commissioner Parks?
Oh, I had one. I'm sorry, if I could just interject, I'm sorry. On the rental assistance, when Mark Lawson was here, and he, like Commissioner Parks had mentioned what the, how low the number was, the 459 households, and you know, Mark Lawson talked about, they're doing the best they can to reach the people they can, and I totally believe that. I was wondering, is there any way that the people that have already received assistance for rental can get another allocation? Because maybe their rental assistance was two months ago, or three months ago, and whatever revenue was supposed to come in, either through the small business or any other avenue, that they still, you know, are in a hole with their landlord. Is there any way they can duplicate and maybe get another allocation? I wish we could reach more, but we don't want to give that money back for that particular service either. So.
Yeah, thank you. Great question, Commissioner. Right now, I do, I want to refresh myself on the guidelines, but I believe it's, we do have a cap on how much a resident can receive through this program.
Okay.
I believe it's $2,500. And there definitely is a list of folks that, that have called that are going through the list. So it's not a lack of interest, it's just working through the verification process is taking some time, because we do have to verify that it was COVID-related and that they meet our eligibility requirements. But our team does meet, like I said, every week with the providers, just to see how things are going. So we can definitely put on the list for this week to see if there's ways to help speed up the process. And I'll verify that I'm giving you the correct answer on that cap of $2,500.
And how much money do we have left in that for the rental assistance?
We have obligated all $7 million that was awarded for this line item, three contracts, Free Store Food Bank, Community Action Agency, and, yeah, Talbert House. So we have obligated all of that funding to those three organizations for this.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Yes. Holly, me and your team is just on fire. You guys are doing this work just so dedicated, and I appreciate it. I can, I see how hard you're working, and, you know, giving the community the help that they need. And I'm also really proud of the programs that we have agreed upon to, to serve the people. You know, you know, they're really unique with the rental assistance, with the small business relief. So hey, we're invested with the phase two of the small business relief.
Oh, great. Thank you for bringing that up. We received 660 applications, which is way more than the first round. And HCDC, as you know, our partner in this, they have, they have reviewed, I want to say, almost half of them. So we do expect very shortly the first batch of agreements to come our way for signature. I think they're ready to send over, as of last week, a little over 200. So they're, they're moving. The changes we made to simplify the process are making the review process much, much simpler and more expedited. But there's, there's definitely still some back and forth with businesses to try and help as many as we can.
So cool. Hey, thank you. Just, I salute you. Thank you for your work.
Oh, thanks. I hope, I hope the whole team's watching to hear all of this. Thank you.
I hope they are too.
Thanks, Holly.
That's it, Madam.
All right. So Jeff, remind us on Thursday what we're looking for by way of by leaves?
On this, we would have a revision to the CARES Act program to insert a program related to cultural, culture and arts institutions. We would also have a by leave contract relating to the initiation of a capital project relating to touchless fixtures for roughly $474,000 in three different county facilities, 800 Broadway, the courthouse, and the county administration building. So those would be the CARES Act programs. In the meantime, we'll follow, continue to follow up with Commissioner Summer Dumas on the additional policy item we discussed today.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the thing, and so, and I agree with the idea that we haven't, because of the nature of what we're doing, it's an interesting idea to think about how youth are impacted, other than the broader, you know, when we help parents, we help youth, you know, through small business loans and rental assistance. But that said, I too have wondered out loud to Jeff and Holly about how, is there any potential program that impacts youth more, like schoolchildren, for instance? And I went right to broadband, and access to broadband, especially for kids that are schooling from home, and maybe have a laptop but don't have access to broadband and what that looks like. And I know it's been a challenge. We've been talking about this for a few weeks now, and how we can do programs that, and, you know, we have to spend the money by the end of the year. So that's part of the challenge here. And if we don't get an extension from the federal government, no, you can't provide broadband to a student throughout the school year. We're not allowed to do that. So I too have been thinking through that. So maybe, you know, if we could put our collective heads together about, you know, what CARES Act dollars, and maybe what other communities too are doing, related to youth programming or youth impact, I guess. Holly, I know that you talk to the other counties on a regular basis just to check in and ask for best practices. So maybe that's an exercise that we can do to make sure that we're hitting that on all cylinders relative to youth.
Great.
I would love to know what you're learning from other counties. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks to both.
One more thing to do, Holly.
Yeah.
Put that on your list.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. So we, it sounds to me like we've got a lot of by leaves coming on Thursday's meeting, so we'll have those stack up. Jackie, sorry for that additional work. All right, so that is the conclusion of our agenda. Is there anything else for the good or the cause, Commissioners?
Madam President, I just wanted to indicate that our meeting on Thursday is the first day of celebration for Domestic Violence Month nationally, and Hamilton County will be celebrating that with a proclamation. So I will be bringing that forward on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, well, thank you. If there's nothing further, I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Parks, did you have an item?
I do. I just wanted to talk about the press conference that we had this morning with the Sheriff's Department. Having to do with the bystander training, our Sheriff's Department was accepted, as we, I talked about in a staff meeting, I think that was last week, where they were accepted at George Washington University, one of 30 law enforcement organizations to go through the bystander training. That will affect and change the way that we enforce law in Hamilton County.
Thank you, Commissioner Parks. And to put that in context, that was one of the tenants of the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. So the work has begun.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I believe we had a motion and a second.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Jeff.
All right, Commissioners, I believe we are back live. Okay. I have called this meeting to order. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners.